Good evening. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, August 19th, 2021. Laguna Beach Unified School Board's open sessions called to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and member Vickers will lead from that.
With my little flag. Please stand, hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that my cheat sheet, Carol?
Yes. I just thought, okay, we all get nervous with where the screen hits or whatever else. I don't think you do though, but I thought we'd put it up there anyways. But thank you for leading us, Jan.
You're welcome.
There is no report out of closed session. This was just a 4D adoption of agenda. Dr. Floria, are there any changes to the agenda?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Fellow board members can have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda.
No move.
And I'll second it. Okay, any discussion before we vote? We have to. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So machine carries five zero. This was just to five A public comment. As Mr. Cullen looks to see if anyone wants to make a public comment, the procedure is written on the agenda. I'll quickly go over it. If you'd like to make a comment and you are viewing the meeting via Zoom webinar, raise your hand prior to a board discussion on item you wish to speak to. And once recognized, unmute your microphone. If you are calling in, press star on on your phone. If you'd like to comment during the designated comment period, once recognized to make your comment, press star six to unmute your phone. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comment. Speaking time is limited to three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes total. And your three minutes starts when you're introduced. Staff will keep the time and meet speakers at three minutes after twenty minutes. Staff will notify the board president with consent. The time may be modified to allow for additional public comment. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items tonight?
Yes, there are two hands up at this time.
Okay.
Colleen Conley, it's your three minutes begins now.
Hi, I had a comment about some of the items that have been going on with the administration and board. Three years ago on September 25th, the board and the admin talked about such an early start date being changed. One of the items that was talked about is no summer homework would be needed anymore because we would have the extra time for them to fit everything in before the testing towards the end of the year. And the summer homework this year is outrageous. I've heard parents for weeks talking about it. I've tried to contact the school. They said to contact the teacher. Teachers haven't even been assigned yet. And that's one of the main reasons that not one of them, but one of the reasons they said starting so early, I mean, we start school on the 23rd, and I know Ms. Vickers has said she didn't want to see anything quite that early on that meeting on the 25th because it is taking up so much of the summer. My son has to quit his job where the other two weeks was important. It's right next door to the sawdust festival. And the other item is the live meetings and being in person. Our city is doing it. Every other school board, we've seen it across the nation that everybody has live meetings. You can do social distancing. I saw Dr. Valoria outside looking at outdoor space. You know, there are other options to move forward and that we're told that is going to move forward, and then it just isn't happening. And it's getting frustrated. We'd like things to just be followed through on or be part of the reasons that the changes are made. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Mr. Colin, is there anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, the the next name could be Leonard Leonardo. You're up now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Thank you. I'd like to speak against Laguna Beach hiring education elements. On April the 2nd, 2021, in an article in the Laguna Beach Independent entitled LBUSD Consultant Shares Roadmap to Confront Institutional Racism, they made a number of comments that upset me. And by the way, 184 other people in our neighborhood newsletter. I'll read part of that. It said, "The LBUSD, in partnership with a consulting firm, has taken first steps to analyze and highlight areas of improvement following the school board's commitment to address institutional racism." The resolution states, "The board commits itself not only to address the symbols of institutional racism and white supremacy, but also to proactively identify and disrupt biases, policies, and remove institutional barriers that perpetuate injustice and inequality in our schools." And then a board followed that that was hired. Board President Carol Normandin is a member of the Equity Steering Committee and helped write the anti-racist education resolution. So far, I don't know what any of that has to do with helping students identify problems. Inspired by last year's nationwide Black Lives Matter protests against radicalized violence by police and others, I said that was really a ridiculous statement. More than 170 other students, teachers, parents, and so forth went on. Superintendent Laurie added, "There are ample opportunities for public comment on the consultant's recommendations." So subsequent to that, I wrote to each of the five board members and asked them for their comments. Two of them, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Normandin, said they had never heard of this article and didn't know about it. I finally sent it to Ms. Normandin. I didn't bother with Mr. Kelly, who had told me tersely to just move on. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. A great repost. Anyway, I investigated educational elements, and I found out that these people, the people that were working for them, the 15 online, let me quote just three of them. "One is passionate about immigrant justice and obsessed with Haitian culture and Game of Thrones. Another one is the former special ed teacher who loves cooking and the Harry Potter series. Another one is on the impact team and she enjoys snuggling with her two cats. Poise. Give me a break." Then here's something else. There are disturbing sections of Education Elements webpage which appear in a section under the tab Services entitled Education Equity, and in some of the videos under the Resources tab in which critical race theory and Black Lives Matter doctrines are preached such as white supremacy, inequity, and racism. I must compliment Ms. Vickers. She was kind enough to write me back extensively. I disagreed with her analysis, but I appreciated her time and effort. Mr. Kelly will forget. Ms. Normandin, I did send the article to. She never she never
Thank you, Mr. Olds, for your for your comments. Mr. Collins, is there anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, we have Sherry Morgan. Your three minutes. I'll make sure I got you right. Sherry Morgan, your three minutes begins now.
Very loud. Good evening. It's been a while. I hope you all are well. I am calling about a situation that I'm a little concerned about regarding summer homework and the workload that the students received this year. Two years ago, when the board pushed through the change in schedule of the calendar, the number one reason was to minimize, if not eliminate, summer homework as well as reduce stress on students, et cetera. Now, obviously, in a COVID year, we can use that for any type of excuse for any situation that we need to, but going forward for this year, the whole reason it was we were starting early was AP tests and summer homework. In fact, I believe if I'm recalling correctly, Mrs. Vickers was very, member Vickers was very adamant against summer homework and felt that the calendar change would be a great solution to help minimize that. So I'm reaching out because several people have reached out to me with concerns that their kids' stress level over the summer was was extensive because of summer homework and asking how long the policies and the ideas that you all put forward are are genuine for the big picture and not the immediate goal. You're making some decisions that are supposed to have this rolling impact on our students to make things better for them. And yet, and again, I understand COVID, but they're not consistent. What you're saying is not consistent with what you're doing for our children and what you're doing for our students. And I think that all of these inconsistencies start to show that there's really a problem with the overall picture and whether you aren't working towards a common goal and all of the decisions lead up to this is what it's going to be. Because otherwise, the decisions that you're making just reflect a very I know there's a word for it, and I can't think of it, but a very, just, you know, whatever's hot today kind of culture. And that's not what our kids' education, especially here, should be like. It should be working towards something of a common goal to help the kids have a balanced education, but also a strong and positive mental health, not what the flavor de jour is in education. And so let's put that forward for our kids. So I think you really need to reevaluate that for next year because many people have commented on how overwhelmed their kids were with all of the high school homework this summer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Morgan.
We have one more speaker. Jennifer, your time starts now.
Okay, good evening, school board. First, I'd like to thank Leonard Olds for speaking on behalf of hundreds and hundreds of hundreds of parents and residents in this town who feel likewise that the turn that this school board is taking towards critical race theory, call it what you want, culturally responsive training, equity, diversity, equality, it's the same thing, just packaged under a different format. A lot of us, most of us reject the premise of CRT, and that premise is that our institutions are systemically racist and discriminatory. I defy any one of you school board members to point to any particular action of the school board as an institution or the LB United School District as an institution. What policies are systemically, institutionally racist and discriminatory in Laguna Beach? If you don't have a problem, then you don't need to fix it. I think what you are doing is going along with the typical political correctness, hiring a very highly expensive and from what it appears, really unsubstantiated organization, education, education element to check a box to say, "Look, oh, look, we have our equity, our disparity, our our race discrimination avoidance program, but you're not really doing anything. And we do, we really need it. Is it necessary? Is it a good use of our taxpayer dollars? I hope to speak to this a little bit later when you are speaking about your equity policy later on, and I'd like to point out the number of the fallacies and false premises in that statement. I'm not sure who wrote it, but it's very poorly done and has a lot of fallacies. So again, thank you to Mr. Olds for speaking out, and I hope that the school board really does some serious thinking about what it is they are trying to do with respect for our students. Is it in their best interest? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Colin, is there anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
There are no more hands up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Since there are no more speakers, we should move to number six on the agenda, which are reports. And the 6A is our we'll start with, sorry, Margaret Water, CSA work on behalf of LBSD employees and the union that represents. You have the floor, Margaret.
Yes, good evening, school board and administration. Well, what I want to say is, did school really ever stop? I mean, with the high school and the elementary and TMS and all the programs that were offered along with the enhancement programs. I know that there was students on most of the campuses at some point during this summer. And how exciting to watch our young students coming in and being let's just say, mixed with the, for me, elementary, the El Moro and the TOW students and just exploring and learning things that maybe they needed. As you know, I do interventions, so that's my area, but it was exciting to have that happening and the excitement of the teachers. Also, I'd like to thank the board and the administration for another great back-to-school breakfast. Wow, we've missed that. And for two years, you know, one year we didn't have it. It was exciting and lots of great food, lots of mixing with members. And I would like to shout out to Dr. Valoria personally. I've already sent him a little text on this. What a class act, Dr. Valoria, to provide the school spirit award of Laguna Beach to every member within our school district and have plaques made for each site. Everyone contributed to what we went through during COVID, and many members mentioned, wow, you know, how could you pick one? But you you did absolutely the right thing. So congratulations on having being in tune with our staff and our members. I'd also like to do a shout out to Ryan Zadia and his M and O team, which of course I represent with the great job they did on all the projects that had to be done this summer. Being a part of the planning with Mr. Zadia and our teams was very enlightening for me. And when things got a little off schedule, Ryan was there to make sure that the subs were provided or what was needed so that our schools were ready for our students and our staff. Those, you know, things that people don't see, but when the gym floors are all shiny, someone did it, and our team, the people I represent, did it. Again, to our nutritional staff that continues to provide meals on an ongoing basis and with the new free lunches and breakfasts for students, exploring those options as we move forward with the teams. Again, for myself personally, I'm totally pleased beyond belief for the new concept in looking at MTSS at El Moro and TOW and now at Thurston, the continuing of supporting our students on multi-tiered levels in areas where there can be enhancement and there can be needs development if needed with all students no student really missing any core materials. Lots of work done by our instructional coaches and our principals to make sure that those encore classes happen and happen around times that the grade level teachers can provide for them. The other thing is, again, great professional development from for the classified staff over this week. And with that, I'd like to also comment that I had a great comp training on equity with this today and also within the leadership based on the policies that we are exploring to understand what is happening about what staff, teachers can do in our environment. So I felt it was very enlightening and from someone who has had some experience in understanding real life situations, I was very pleased with our training and and the team that provided the training. And my last shout out is to HR and Mr. Conlon for all of his team, for all the hiring that has happened and the policies and the procedures and dealing with the MOUs that CSA needs to move forward so that we're providing for our members appropriately. So again, thank you all, and I look forward to Monday morning when those little shining faces will be at top of the world. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for that energetic report, Margaret, and for all the gratitude in it. This brings us next to the vice president, Scott Lookup, if you'll provide a report to the board.
All right. It's great to see you all again, and I've been seeing everybody on campus. So it's been wonderful. We appreciate working with Dr. Valoria and the administration on negotiating the impacts and the effects of our new vaccine mandate. We had some great meetings on that. We all have the same shared interest of keeping the students, the staff, and even other community members healthy and safe. So that that worked really, really well, in my opinion. The teachers, we've been working really hard throughout this week collaborating, working on MTSS as well and the equality piece today. We're looking forward to having the students back in the classroom come Monday. It's been a long time coming and we're just excited for the new school year.
Thank you, Scott. I can hear your voice too. Well, excited about. And this brings us next to our SRO, Officer Fred. Can we have your report, please?
Yes, and I think we have a slideshow to go with it. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody's faces again, albeit virtually, but it's still nice to be back at a school board meeting and be able to give a report kind of about what the stuff that myself and Ashley have been doing. Not just over the summer, but some things leading up into next school year that we're excited about getting started. So it's been a long while since we actually had a board meeting, and I we haven't had the opportunity to introduce Ashley, who's been the new school resource officer for going on about six months now. So just a little bit of Ashley. She's a very, very hard worker. She integrated very quickly into into the schools. Her personality is is perfect for this position. The kids were drawn to her immediately, and she started making friends with the staff members very quickly. I don't know you guys all know, but her mother, Dorinda, worked for the school district for many, many years and just recently retired. So she's been a part of the Laguna Beach community for a long time with her mother and with herself. I think she went to Laguna Beach High School for a couple of years, if I'm not screaming accurate on that, but I'll let her talk to that. So without further ado, let Ashley introduce herself.
Yeah, thank you, Fred. Appreciate. I wasn't even holding him hostage. That was great. Very passionate about this position. Fred and I have a great partnership, and we have an amazing partnership with the district. Thank you, Dr. Valoria, for your continued support with our program. And we are so excited to actually see all the kids in person and get them engaged in all kinds of fun activities and just be the best resource we possibly can. So thank you very much, and I look forward to eventually attending these meetings in person, but happy to to start here nonetheless.
Thank you, Ashley. So I recently was able to sit down with Dr. Keller and kind of go over some things that we wanted to prioritize for this coming year and then beyond. So some of the things that we kind of brainstorm about was as you can see here in the slides, some student and staff safety, which is always our top priority. But visibility, collaboration, and connectedness. Moving on through through the school year, we're really going to try and work on creating a like a brand for us and try to get us more connected with the school even more so. Starting a canvas page and certain things like that, just to try and get us even more integrated into school. You know, obviously, we're always here to serve and support the schools in any way we can. We've done very well thus far collaborating with the site principals and vice principals. The the school counselors and on all the staff, we've been very, very fortunate to have a good working relationship with all of them. We recently had a an OCAIC assessment done on some of the schools. I know we recently had it a couple of years ago. We just wanted to reassess because we always want to be on top of things and make sure that we're always staying current. So that was something that was done recently in which we kind of identified some things that moving forward, we're hoping to implement. And that kind of goes in with collaborating with the safety committee for for those types of assessments and then delivering some more training because it's been it's been a little bit of time since we last had some some in-person training for some of the school safety stuff. So we're looking forward to doing that in the near future. Just a couple of updates of what we've kind of done over the summer and then leading into into this next school year. We recently had our Leadership Academy over the summer. It was August 9th through the 13th. We've actually integrated into the enrichment program with the school district, which was which was great. I could probably talk to you guys for a couple of hours about what we experienced during that week. But just to try and keep it short and sweet, the the personal growth that we saw from the kids was amazing. I know it touched my heart and Ashley's and all the members that were involved in that in that academy. But we, you know, we went to Hindy's Kitchen, and we did some team building there. We had very speakers throughout the community come and talk to the kids about resiliency and entrepreneurship. We had KidGrit come and talk to them about, you know, dealing with personal situations and just just a myriad of different things that we did throughout the week. And it was an amazing week, and the kids truly enjoyed it. And then we had a graduation at the end with the parents came, and we've received nothing but positive feedback from that. Moving forward, we're going to be obviously present at the at the high school football or the high school football games with myself and Ashley, trying to attend most of them, if not one of us will have a team member with us, so at least two officers for the high school football games. Obviously, e-bike safety is a continuing thing that we're dealing with. So we're going to continue that rolled into next year with some enhanced enforcement from some of the police department members, just trying to educate as much as we can and get these kids kind of square away with with what they can and cannot do in e-bikes. And then very, very excited for the school school year to start. It's nice that we're segueing into what seems to be, in most ways, a normal school year with events and all that coming up. So we're really excited about that. I think we have a couple of pictures from the Leadership Academy. This is when we went out to the OC Food Bank. All the kids packaged 435 meals for some struggling families in that period of time, which was amazing. And just to see them like from the start, when we first got going down the the conga line of putting all the stuff in the boxes, and then 45 minutes later, it was like just a well-oiled machine as far as getting those things produced. So it was a lot of fun. And then, you know, the next slide, so a couple more pictures. The upper left that circled was our team building. We had a company come in called Firefly, and we kind of broke the ice with the kids and got them doing some some outdoor activities where we worked on team building. Our command staff joined us for a pancake breakfast where they cooked the kids pancakes, which was a lot of fun. We had our fire department come and talk to the kids about curbside CPR, a couple of first aid things. And then on the right, the picture is also when our command staff talked to the kids about their journey and the things that they went through. So they kind of got some insight into everybody has a different path in life and we all go through stuff and Nathan, I'm in a board meeting. Please close the door. Sorry about that. I thought this might happen. Okay, great. Thank you. Love you. Sorry about that. Joys of being a parent, but then we have the the outrigger paddling that we did and the beach cleanup. They actually cleaned up 45 pounds of trash in 45 minutes at Dohany Beach. So all in all, it was a blast. It was a lot of fun, but we're looking forward to this next school year and all the things that we're wanting to start to implement moving forward. So thank you. And I will a little bit over, but I appreciate it. So that there's a long-term stuff that we have going on. We're actually going to start to reestablish our Explorer Program, which you've gotten a lot of interest from from the kids already. Again, student mentorship and and starting to, you know, continue to build those relationships with the kids. And then the continued collaboration with the district that we're excited about. So I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys, for for bearing with me with the interruption. But we're extremely excited for the school year and when working with the district to to get those goals accomplished.
The interruption was the, well, not the best part, but it was great. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. We miss your mom. So really appreciate the report and all the information and everything you guys are doing. With that, we're going to move to 6C. Dr. Valoria, the floor is yours.
I'll be brief. Again, as mentioned by Margaret and and Scott, we had our welcome back breakfast yesterday. It was great to see everyone back in person. We did offer a virtual option as well for some of our staff to attend just because bringing everybody together, it's quite a few people in one space. It was outdoors. We moved to the quad. I appreciate the board members for your support. I know not all of you were able to attend, but you're all there in spirit and or there in person and helping hand out awards and recognizing our staff, our employees of the year, et cetera. And mine and Mike will talk a little more about that in his little update. Overall, it's been a great, great start, right? Great professional development this week. Kudos to the teams that put that together. It is definitely a lot of work on behalf of our teachers and staff. And as Margaret mentioned and and Scott mentioned, now that's it's been a packed couple of days and tomorrow they'll kind of wrap up their days and get ready for our students who will be there bright and early come Monday. So we're really excited to get this school year going, getting our students back in person as we ended the year last year. And we will continue to work with our community and hopefully keep our students as safe as possible. Obviously, lots going on out there in the broader community, but we are putting together a and continue to put together a robust plan to support everyone as much as we can. So again, thank you. Thank the board for, again, all your support, especially over this last summer as we geared up for this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. With that, we're going to move to 6D, Executive Cabinet Member Reports. Where I start with you, Mr. Dixon, operations in your department.
Thank you. And just to echo what's kind of been said already, it was it was a great event at the breakfast. It was wonderful to see everybody all together, and it renews our excitement to start this school year and going off kind of what Margaret said, there were a lot of great facilities. And going off kind of what Margaret said, there were a lot of great facility projects we were able to accomplish this summer. So kudos to our entire facilities team, whether it was the deep cleaning or the maintenance projects or even the new construction and improvement projects we have going on. Always a lot of work and it's always a lot of coordination. So kudos to them. They've done a great job. Busy summer as always, but it's 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 good when we're busy. So we like that. Same with our nutrition team, always grateful for the work they've done and they continue to do for us. And I want to give a special shout out to Liz Yoder in our business office, who's been help coordinating the transportation services and the new routes. With the increase in bus capacity, all the new sales and stops are being programmed in the database. It's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and Liz is meticulous and has been doing wonderful for us. Happy to report that as of today, anyone who's requested a pass, we are able to accommodate. So it's very positive with our new capacities, with our continuing mitigation measures in place, the masks and the open windows on the bus. But we're ready. We're excited for Monday. So we're all looking forward to it. And thank you, everybody, who's who's helped make this happen.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Collin, your report?
Yes, thank you, President Normandin. As everyone said, the this week is 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 jam-packed with so many activities with all the the professional development happening. And the welcome back breakfast was most definitely a special day. And we do, we were able to recognize both of our classified employee of the year as well as our certificate employee of the year. So we brought up Chantel McConnell and we also recognized Corey Day. And and also the for employees with years of service. So again, it makes for a special event and we were able to, we did pivot and provide the opportunity for people to to join us virtually. So we had about maybe about a third of the employees ended up choosing that. But again, special thanks to all, just that it's a it's a team effort to put that event together. So everyone from Human Resources and through Lieutenant's Office and just the the entire leadership team stepping up and getting there at, you know, about six in the morning to help help set up. And it was it was mentioned, but definitely a shout out to the IT team for this week. They really do an amazing job helping to make sure that all the everything goes off smoothly. It's a lot of moving parts and we appreciate them covering, really covering everyone and and working hard to make sure everything's working, running smoothly. We are at Human Resources and, you know, school starts on Monday, so we continue to to staff every day. Seems like there's a new curve ball with somebody unexpectedly leaving or, you know, what we just, you know, what my team is amazing. We just, you know, just roll with it and make sure we get people in place, get the right people on the bus in the right spots and continue to move forward. So we're excited about that. It has been busy. So special thanks, as we mentioned, to the CSA negotiations team, the COVID negotiations team, as well as the Bofas negotiations team for meeting quickly this week to discuss the the impacts and effects of the vaccine mandate for all staff. So we we met successfully and then we're going to have MOUs in place with both unions to move forward with with either collecting all the vaccination records for every employee or dealing with the exemption process. We're going to be moving forward that and have that piece in place by Monday of next week. And I believe that that's everything from Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, your report's next.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been really, really busy recently as we prepare for the start of school and just a few days away. As Ms. Water said, it's been two years since last time we had our welcome back breakfast, along with our district-wide PD day, which was today. And so with our teachers and structural assistants, parent educators returning, you know, it's been a really great week. The energy has been great. Staff's been collaborating and planning around equity and access, our intervention programs, some of which are new, some new assessments. Just we're so fortunate to have such a caring and collaborative staff. And it really, really hit home the last few days as we were together working and getting ready for this Monday. I did want to, I want to give just a quick, special thank you to our principals and our instructional coaches and other school leaders for facilitating such an impactful professional development day today. You know, they've been working on a lot of other tasks the last few weeks to get things ready. And it was a really, really powerful day today, getting people together. And as we said earlier, you know, kind of wrap things up tomorrow and then kids will be here on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for all of your work and effort getting everyone ready for school. I'm sorry, I need to get back up. Most will take us to seven on the agenda. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of award to contract Brunau Clark Architects for Architectural Services for TK Planning and the District Office Feasibility Study in amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars?
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. If there are no comments, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So we had issued a request for proposal last month for two distinct projects. And you see them both in the board item itself. We have the pre-K or transitional kindergarten facilities planning. As you know, per Senate Bill one thirty, we are to phase in a transitional, universal transitional kindergarten program by the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And one of the things we know we would need to address right away, the sooner the better actually, would be the facilities to support such a program. As I'm sure the boards are aware, the facilities to support kindergarten students are much different than what you do to support even third and fourth graders. They're much smaller and there's different requirements for those spaces. So what we're looking to do is begin that programming. It's the facility planning phase of what would be that project, so we could help identify within the code variances and the allowances what the most feasible and cost-effective options might be for us, given what we know today. And that would be looking at our enrollment history, where we're projecting going forward, available spaces and then potential for new spaces. The second project on the RFP has to do with the District Office Feasibility Study. Again, following the same model of the facilities planning, where you look at the existing spaces, analyze the program needs, potential future needs and capacity, as well as workflow and efficiency, which are a little more unique to office spaces versus entire school sites. That's the work that we'd be looking for there. Seven architectural firms submitted responses to the request for proposals. After review by a panel of four members by our team, we're bringing for Brunau Clark Architects recommending a recommending award for them to perform this portion of the contract for both of those projects as listed in the RFP. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Good. And if we can use the zoom hand, because then you'll pop to the front of the screen. You'll put up your zoom hand if you have a question. Oh, go ahead, Member Perry.
Is one of the issues with the the TK, doesn't it need to be near the kindergarten playground? Or don't those students have to have a playground area?
So good question. That would be part of the analysis portion of the project. Ideally, you'd want a shared space for that play area because you maximize, you know, what available space you have, especially because we're working within our existing spaces. But certainly you can look for opportunities to provide them their own play space as well. But that'll be part of the exploratory process that goes with the architects.
Okay. And and what what are the needs of the district office?
Well, there's there's some that I I can speak of certainly, but generally, that would be what the architects are going to help us identify in terms of our workflow and processes, the efficiency and availability of workspace, all things that we would need to operate and maximize our effectiveness as employees. We want to make sure we have the space to support that. So similar to what we do with our school sites, we would be analyzing for the district office. This wouldn't cover the portion of construction documents or construction. This would just be analyzing what would be our best option moving forward for discussion at a future, actually, the September Board Workshop. So we can review what options exist for the district office and should we move forward, how might we do so?
Thank you.
I don't see any more zoom hands. So with that, fellow members. Oh, I'm sorry, Jane. Go ahead.
It's okay. Jeff, I know it's specific questions. It's way too early for this. But on the TK, will they be looking at both the elementary sites?
Yes, yeah. Part of the RFP had them analyze all of our sites.
Okay, thank you. And did you have interviews with all seven or just do it by paper submissions?
No, because it's just the very initial facilities planning portion of the process. It was just the paper screening and then followed by informal presentations by them to Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
Member Kelly, go ahead with your question.
Jeff, I'm wondering if you've thought of possibly other locations as far as for the pre-kindergarten and for the 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 school site for the administration buildings.
So, no, we we are not there yet. This process would identify those possibilities that would be explored. But no, we haven't. We haven't jumped any of those in terms of possible solutions yet.
Thank you.
Definitely a good question, Jim. Dr. Kelly, definitely be a topic of conversation as a result of this. If especially if it's identified that, you know, really, we don't have the facilities available to us or space available for us to accomplish what we need to accomplish. So we would bring that back, obviously, with the board and and discuss further as to what potential next steps or opportunities may exist at that time. So great question.
Sorry, Member Kelly, are you done with your questions? I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Member Osborne?
Mr. Dixon, for the TK specifically, do we have a sense from our longer term forecast what the group size is that we might be expecting, like the cohort of kids? And maybe two years out, that's going to be of of age, four-year-olds?
No, unfortunately, our projections are based off what our current enrollment patterns have been. So we do have a TK program, but it's very small. So we don't have updated projections for what this new program might entail. That will have to be built over time as we experience it.
So would any of the work that if hired RCA is doing, would they be looking at some of those forecasts? So we have an idea of what type of what what type of group size we might be looking at? Like, would they be doing some of that forecasting? So we know, are we looking at maybe a hundred kids or a hundred and fifty kids or fifty kids?
Certainly, yeah. Demographics plays a large role in facilities planning. Absolutely, yeah.
But is that part of this RFP?
They won't do a projection. They will ask for our, what our projections might be. So we'll need to develop those while working with them. But yeah, they will certainly have that as a major consideration for planning.
Okay, makes sense. And then was the RFP the seven bids that you got in, or that's the wrong word, but the seven responses that you got in, were those just for the district office? Or were they, were they all combined for both projects simultaneously?
They were combined. Both projects were listed on the RFP, being that they're both somewhat unique in nature for a K-12 district. And then, yeah, receiving the seven from all qualified bids, but after review from the panel, we're now the one that we're bringing forward for award.
And then last question, are we, are we happy with the work that they're providing? Because we're currently contracted with them or have used them for studies and or design work for current construction?
Yes, I can say that our projects have been very smooth when working with them up to this point.
Thank you.
Carol, I had another.
Go ahead, Member Vickers.
Jeff, just like kindergarten is, and I'm assuming TK is the same, will this program be what parents could choose to not send their children to?
Oh, in terms, I I it's more of probably what Dr. Valer or Dr. Mayberry could answer in terms of the program side of the instruction. But
It falls outside of the compulsory years.
That's our understanding is that it would be required to be offered. So that therein lies a little bit of our challenge regarding, you know, looking at enrollment. And we kind of have to do a best guess estimate in some ways, because we, you know, we just can't assume that every student who's four would eventually be attending. I would, you know, recognize that some some community members have to take their children to a potential daycare closer to their environment. They may work, so it might not be as easy to have them just attend the Logan Beach. However, at the same time, I think we recognize that at at no cost to to them, it may be an incentive to try to find a way to to have their students attend. So there are, there are quite a few unknowns right now as we engage a little bit, including the funding source at the state level that will continue to to navigate and advocate for direct funding for this, for community-funded districts. But another good question, you know, and as Member Osborne pointed out, you know, trying to find demographic data and really trying to project, it's going to be a little challenging. We'll we'll utilize decision site to see, you know, kind of birth rate we might have in the area. But again, that's not, that's not going to be a direct correlation to the numbers of students. We kind of back into the number based off our number of kindergartners we have and and look at that and determine, you know, more than likely, it's not going to exceed the number of kinders that we have. So we can look at that. The the other piece of it is just the ratios as well that we're looking at and and what the rules are that the state settles on ten to one or twelve to one and what those components require. Because that will also determine capacity of rooms and space.
Thank you.
We're all great questions. Are you done, Member Vickers?
Yes.
No, it's okay. So may I have a motion and a second to award contract to RCA?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Vickers and Osborne. Okay, now fellow board members, is there any discussion or comments before we vote?
I wanted to make one comment. I think as we as a board engage and work on TK or preschool-aged students, we have to be careful to not apply everything we know about K through twelve to to preschool. I think this is a bold, bold move from our, with the bill that passed. And so even thinking about spaces differently and how a room for four-year-olds, you know, either twenty or twenty-four four-year-olds looks is very different than what a room for kindergarten or first graders looks like. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's really exciting, but definitely a different, different developmental needs of those students by a lot.
Don't know, Kelly, if you've had a chance to see our TK classrooms, but they, I think you'd find that it's, you know, they have met that need for those that basically are four-year-olds in the TK program, and it is very different. And the teacher, the teacher interaction and the teacher interaction with parents is very different.
Yeah, I have seen those rooms, at least the one. Thank you, Member Vickers.
Yeah, it it does look more like you're walking into preschool in that room and maybe occupational therapist as well, kind of like a mix of those two things when you walk in that space. I think they're all thinking that through, but I agree that our mindfulness on it, that it's new and it's not the same thing. And I know we have experts that pull upon other experts as well. Any other discussion or or comment?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Mark Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries five zero and this takes us to number eight on the agenda. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of Certiport Port Authorized Test Center Agreement to Allow Career Tech Education Pathway Teachers to Proctor Industry Certified Exams on campus at LBHS?
There are no hands at this time.
Since there, thank you, Mr. Collin. Since there are no comments, Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, a goal of our career education program is to increase the opportunities for students have a training and skill development to qualify them for industry certifications. This agreement would expand our CTE pathway industry certification opportunities for the for the students. These certifications demonstrate that students have attained a specific level of skills, training or knowledge to seek employment positions. Employers know that based on the certification. In this case, for cert, or they they provide instructional materials for the task preparation. And then they also allow our teachers to proctor the exams. Without that, the students would have to prepare on their own potentially, as well as go find a testing center to take an exam. So this would initially be for our visual arts pathway with certifications within the Adobe suite with the potential to expand to a few others. There's no cost to the district for this agreement either. It's just to set up a testing center for our students for these specific classes on our campus. Thank you.
Lose Carol?
Carol, I'll just step away for a quick second. So I'll, if it's okay with with the board, I'll I'll go ahead and kind of navigate this. Oh, there she is.
First time, I think no one's been at my house and the doorbell just kept ringing. Sorry about that.
He has a question. I was about to call him, Dee.
Go ahead. Okay, perfect. Go ahead. You're muted, Dave. Do you still muted?
I wanted to know which were visual arts were going to be certified, get certification? What are those areas of visual arts?
This one's the skills with the that's with the Adobe suite, specifically for entrepreneurship. So that capstone course that for the visual arts pathway.
Okay, great.
At least initially, there's other, there's a few other options in there, but this is what we want to kind of pilot out and see how it goes first before we look to explore or expand.
Okay, terrific. Thanks.
I don't see any other questions. So fellow board members can have a second.
So moved?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion or comments before we vote?
It's more of observation and comment. Over recent years, I've really seen an increase in certificate programs at colleges and universities, community colleges all the way up to the universities, and it's really become a growing advantage, I guess, opportunity for students at that level. And so I'm glad that we're recognized that to make it more efficient for our students to to take those tests and to get the certificates, add it to their resumes, and it just is in addition to getting degrees, it really is something that students take advantage of in all in all areas. So I think it's a good program.
I agree completely with you. And I think it's exciting for our teachers too. There are any other?
It opens up their world and their possibilities. And, you know, like, member Vickers and I have learned a lot about students going and doing these jobs when they're in college, and they get paid much better than they do if they're bussing tables. So it's a financial advantage as well as work ethic, and it just gives them more opportunities all around.
It definitely opens up opportunities. Just a big smile on Chad's face, because I know he decided about bringing this forward. It's a lot of work to put together. Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments, discussion. Okay, so Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries five zero. Thanks, Dr. Mary Mayberry. This moves us to item nine. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the July nineteenth twenty twenty one special meeting minutes?
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Since there are no comments, Dr. Warrior, the floor is yours.
These are the minutes from that meeting. The reason they're not in consent is because in these three meetings, we had one member present or one member absent. So this next minutes, I believe, Dr. Kelly was absent, and then the next two minutes after that, I believe, member Perry was absent. So they have to be approved separately.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have a motion and a second to approve these minutes.
Vote. A motion for all of them, all three items?
No, we we have to do it because it's different people. So this one has to be, because remember Kelly wasn't available. So this one has to be, yeah.
You could do that for the the next one, next two, but not this one.
So was there a motion?
Member Osborne motion.
I'll second.
Okay. And then assuming there's no discussion. Victoria, can you please conduct a form?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes.
And member Kelly, I'll have you as an extension since you weren't at the meeting. Thank you.
Motion carries four zero zero one. For the approval.
Can I motion?
Yes.
Two?
Yeah, so for the for the next one, Jan, do you want to go ahead and make a motion to approve? Oh, no, I have to ask for a comment first. Mister Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of the August third twenty twenty one special meeting minutes?
There's no one at this time.
And can you include the August tenth so we can motion them together?
Yeah, let me do that real quick. Mister Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of the August tenth twenty twenty one special meeting minutes, which is item C on the agenda?
No one at this time.
Okay, thank you for that, Mister Khan. Okay. Jan, can you go?
Third and August tenth special meeting minutes.
And I'll second that. Go ahead, Clerk Osborne, second. Okay, Victoria, can you please?
Before Victoria takes, I'd just like to make a comment, Carol, that Ms. Weber goes to great lengths to schedule meetings that we can all attend. And even and board members really try to accommodate that, but our schedules change. And so that I just wanted to recognize that some things just happen and members need to miss. So that's these aren't singled out for any reason, then the extensions that are required by law.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out, member Vickers. I appreciate that. And that's true, our schedules do change, and there's she corrals a lot of us. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
Yes, but I'm sure you're not to laugh, sorry. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes.
And member Perry, I'll have you as an extension, correct?
Abstain, yeah.
Motion carries four zero zero one. And this moves us to item ten A on the on the agenda, the consent counter. Mister Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the consent counter items tonight?
Not, oh, I'm sorry. There is several hands. I'll start with Sherry Morgan, your three minutes begins now.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to speak specifically on item N, the contract with the the school well for yoga and mindfulness practice for the staff and teachers. I was looking at the contract, and I see that there's five hours a week for direct instruction to students at LBHS and TMS. And I know you can't answer questions, but I'm hoping that you'll answer the question in your discussion of what does that look like and what does that mean? I think that by seeing this contract in the agreements, in the in this section of the agenda, that the district is embracing the idea of using yoga and mindfulness as a way to diffuse stress as well as to help with coping skills. And so I would really love to see it be a larger portion of practice that we're instilling into our kids. And I know that we're trying to create some different opportunities at the high school, whether it be at lunch or after school, or maybe even before school on a Friday, where we can facilitate different programs for for their wellness, for their connectedness through the PTA. And so I would love to to know more about what this looks like and what the consideration is to expand the program, if that makes sense. Sorry, I'm a little rusty on speaking to you guys right now. Lucky for you. So if somebody in that discussion could possibly explain that, that would be great, because I'd love to pass that information on so that our parents know about it, so that our students know about it, so that they'll take advantage of that. If it's open for all, or if it's a structured situation, how can we make it open for all in other times during the day? Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Morgan, for that. And staff, if you could, whoever could follow up with her on that, that'd be great. Mister Colin, is there anyone else wishing to speak on consent calendar?
Colleen, this is your three minutes.
Thank you, Mister Conlon. I just had a comment on D on the hiring of the athletic administrator. And just, we had extensive conversation on the July fifteenth board, and one of the common themes, I think Mister Conlon said, they want, you want them to have expertise and experience in the area of running interscholastic sports program in high school. And the person that looks like it was hired from my able to look at it was a school counselor for the last eight years. And the experience they had running it previously was as a principal and not a main idea, and also has a family member who coaches two teams. So just a little concerned with that. I think it's fair to bring that up. And then, you know, maybe it'll give her a different perspective. Maybe not hope for the best, but thought that that should be brought up because family members for her to actually be evaluating him, and he's a coach on two teams, seems a little unusual. And I know of other people who applied for the position who had seemingly much more experience. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mister Colin, is there anyone else wishing to speak on consent right of consent counter tonight?
There are no other hands at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. Since there are no comments, we shall move on to ten B. Do any members wish to make a or to ask a question or make comment, not have a board discussion and vote on any of these consent items?
On any?
Do you have a comment or question, but not where you want to poll them and have discussion and vote separately? Go ahead, member Perry.
Comment or question? Yes, I would also, you know, like to know a little bit more about the yoga program. I'm really happy that we have it, but I'd like a little bit more details.
Okay. To not get into any violation, are you good with that information coming in update? Or do you want to pull that item so that we can have discussion on it?
I'm good with it coming in an update. And I had already asked Dr. Gloria some questions about the new athletic director, and I I hope that this person has experience making sure our teams are in the right leagues, et cetera.
Heard that comment. Any other comments or questions, not pulling them? Okay, and do you have any more? Because you still have your Zoom hand up, so I just want to make sure. Okay. Okay, since no one's pulling any item. Sorry, I have to get to my right spot here. Now, are there any, or before I say no one's pulling, so before we go to vote on them and take action, does anyone want to pull any item? Okay.
Motion for under item C through Q?
C through Q?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a second. Awesome. Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote for item C through Q?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries five zero. And this will move us to to the governance section. And before we jump into this, I thought we'd take a quick five minute break, and I'll come back at seven oh nine. And then we'll jump into all the board policies. You guys in five minutes. Look, it looks like looks like everyone's back in the member Vickers. All here. Okay, we're gonna reconvene in the meeting at seven ten PM. We're gonna start with eleven A, which is action items governance. Is the, Mister Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the second reading approval of board policy six one five eight independent study?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you, Mister Collins, since there's no comment. Doctor Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, so due to the the recent passage of Assembly Bill one thirty, Board Policy six one five eight was required to be updated. The legislation revised provisions related to utilizing long term independent study for students whose health may be at risk for in person instruction, as determined by the parent or guardian. Many of the provisions in AB one thirty are similar to the or the same as those that were in place for distance learning last year, including requirements around synchronous and asynchronous instruction, daily interaction based on grade level with a credential teacher, and then tiered reengagement strategies. Because of the number of revisions, which at this time are for this year only, it's recommended that the currently policy be deleted and replaced in its entirety. And then also, this policy is brought forward as a single policy in the six thousand series because of the need to have it in place at or near the start of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Mayberry. For members, do you have any questions before we have a motion where we'll have comments and discussion? Want to do anything? Anything? Can I have a motion in a second to approve Board Policy six five eight independent state?
Move approved. Second?
So we have Clerk Osborne and Kelly. Is there any board members, do you have any comments or is there any discussion? I know we just covered this in the workshop, so. I don't see any. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Sorry, reloading all of a sudden, just one second.
Sure.
Member Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so motion carries five zero, which takes us to eleven B on the agenda. Mister Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak to the first read and board policies in the zero series?
There is a hand up at this time.
Okay.
Jennifer, your three minutes begins now.
Okay, thank you again, board members. I know I'm talking to a a wall here with respect to the current administration, but I ask if any of you have actually read this equity policy and really analyzed it. There's a lot of premises here that have absolutely no substantiation, no proof, no background, no facts to support them. They're simply blanket statements. And a lot of us, hundreds of us, if not thousands, reject these premises out of hand. We do not believe them. Okay, for example, what is the deal with diversity in and of itself? What is the intrinsic value of diversity in and of itself for its own sake? When did this become the almighty of everything that we have to have diversity? I reject that statement that in and of itself, it is something that is to be strived for outside of effort, hard work, perseverance, et cetera. Just the fact that diversity itself is not a goal. Perhaps inclusion is really what you mean. Now, inclusion is important. Okay, that refers to that feeling of belonging, the extent to which students are valued and respected, accepted, and encouraged to fully participate. Inclusion, we get this diversity for sake of solely diversity doesn't make any sense whatsoever. If, for example, the entire school district was a hundred percent brown or a hundred percent black, would that be okay with you? Because that somehow diversity is a diversity only as it applies to whites or only as it applies to straights? I I don't get what the end game is here. People should be people. Students should be students, period. The more we focus on their differences, the more we focus and segregate and discriminate, which is what you are doing here. You are taking segments and you are focusing on them, pulling them out, making them, if you will, discriminated against and Discriminated against and segregated by virtue of pulling them out. Let me ask you another question. When we're looking about students, what about those students who come from alcoholic families? Are we doing something about those students with respect to equity? How about those students whose parents are simply checked out? Uh, but the students that only have one parent. How come we're not focusing on all students? Who may have issues that they feel are being marginalized in school, not necessarily because of their race. Or their sex or their gender, but maybe perhaps other issues. Shouldn't we be focusing on the child as a whole? Instead of going down this rabbit hole path of segregating people out? Perhaps by equity, what we're talking about is equality. Equality can can even the playing field, right? We give everybody the same toolbox to work with. That we all. But when.
Colin, are there any other speakers? And thank you, Jennifer, for your comments. Colin, are there any other speakers on the zero series?
There are no other hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Colin. Um, Dr. Blair, there's been certain more comments or yours for the zero series.
As you can see, uh, again, and as member Norman, as you mentioned, uh, these were discussed and reviewed by the board. Uh, the special meeting um uh that was open to the public. And we are bringing them forward per board direction for for a street.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. And we did have um. Two meetings this summer on them. We had three scheduled and we changed one. Um, fellow board members, do you have any questions? Before we have a motion and after the motion, we can have discussion and comments. Don't see any. Okay, could I have a motion to move board policies in the zero series forward for second reading and approval?
So moved.
I'll second that. Okay, for members, are there any comments you want to make or is there any discussion on any of these policies in the zero series? It's the only thing I do want to comment about our um. Our equity policy is one this is a the CSBA policy. But it really is talking about marginalized learners, all marginalized learners. However, that might be. Okay, oh, go ahead, member Perry.
Is that in this series?
Yes.
Zero, sir? Yes. Zero four one five.
Oh, I was looking for zero, something else. Um. Okay, I see. I I I was concerned about. The saying that now I can't, I don't have the policy right in front of me. But I was concerned about having. Curriculum, books, other things chosen to go along with. To go along with this. And I, how how will that be done? I mean, it's not. Um, like our our regular series or state adopted textbooks. I mean. Will parents have an opportunity to look at the materials that are maybe brought in for this?
Are you referencing um item five on the first page of the policy?
Item five on the first page of the policy.
Does adopting curriculum and instructional materials accurately reflect the diverse of the diversity among the student groups?
Yes. That's what I'm looking at.
When we bring forward adoption of curriculum. We take it through curriculum council and then bring it to the board for approval. Obviously, we have supplemental instruction materials that are not required by board approved, but we do run those through a process. And we will continue to utilize the same process we always have for those.
Well. I think in this, I think in this case, um, I'm not sure exactly what the process is for supplemental materials. Um, could you explain that to me?
Well, it's dependent on what the material is. Um, so, you know, obviously, we have a process where. Um, depending on if it's a something that's significant, it would go through curriculum council. Um, if it's simply a teacher's bringing in a a article to read, but that wouldn't come through uh curriculum council. So if there's a teacher's bringing in a a current event from LA Times or New York Times or whatever, Wall Street Journal. Um, into their curriculum, that's an, that is simply a an additional tool. We do not require that the. Um, staff member bring those forward for approval. I don't think that would be um something the board would want to review. Uh, because then you'd be looking at things on a on a daily basis as teachers constantly are bringing in materials. You know, so it's classic news, all et cetera.
Well, Jason, I would add to that. The students also bring in materials on teacher request and um. So, you know, we, I have confidence in the teachers of handling any uh situations that come up regarding materials that are brought.
Well, I have seen some books that I'm really uncomfortable with and I. I think many parents would be uncomfortable with them too. And I want to see if there's a process that we can somehow monitor what is.
State list, correct?
What is brought in.
Lysing that.
Can you provide an example of a text that we're using that you've?
No, not a textbook. I'm saying a book.
A book.
You might read aloud or.
A book, yeah.
Have your class read.
Is there a book that you're specifically concerned about? You said you found some, so just.
Actually, I have a list, but um.
Or specific one that you could share. So I mean, this is first I've heard, so.
I'd rather not say it right now.
When would you then share it? This is when we share things, Dave.
Right, but I. Um. I don't have, I don't have the name on the top of my head. Of the different, of the different books that I think would maybe not be appropriate.
And you, and those are books that we're currently using?
No.
You just said you had a list of books. Okay.
Not that we're currently using, books that I have seen that I don't think would be appropriate. And I'm concerned that with this policy, they would be brought in and. Because they, you know, we don't really have a way to regulate. Um, and it would be disturbing for some, some parents and students.
We've had.
Hypothetically?
We've had other materials available to to students in all levels, elementary, middle school and high school. When a, when a parent um does not want their student reading what the class is reading. And there's.
Right, but but. Um, board member Vickers, if it's a read aloud. For instance, in an elementary school, the teacher doesn't send home to the parents what she's reading aloud.
But you were referencing something that had that hasn't come to school yet.
True.
Just a fair of of books that students might read?
Books that might be read to students. Or books that might be in a class library?
Okay. Okay, well. I I do know, I have the experience that member Victor's was talking about where. There's a book, one of my kids didn't want to read because they thought it was going to be sad or something. I can't remember what it was. Way back in elementary, the teacher had them step outside and read a different book. Was, you know, after.
I've I've died. Uh, yeah, I've done that in my classroom too, when it's a a book that the students are reading or my reading group was reading and taking home for nightly reading. Um, I'm, then the parents would know what the book was. If if a child, if you're having silent reading in your class and the child just goes to choose a book from the class library, they might not know. If a child brings a book in and wants the teacher to read it. It, you know, there. I just see potential.
We have. I just think you're could be imposing upon freedoms, so.
Well, it's imposing on freedom too, to have a teacher read a book that parents don't want read to their kids.
May I ask a question, Jason, that um. Certainly at the, I don't know what levels, but we share with parents and teachers share with parents routinely at a back to school night. Uh, like a class syllabus and what's going to be on topic for that semester, that quarter. That is a practice, isn't it?
Yes.
Um, fellow board members, I just wanted to go back to the actual policy, the first read policy that we're looking at and see if there was a particular. Item that is not sitting well for someone, because when I did the first read on this policy. I really liked or really appreciated how it talked about. Um, equity as, you know, disaggregating it. If you look in the policy, maybe Victoria can bring it up. Disaggregating the um student groups. Like, for example, in number one. Disaggregated our data here locally, right? Our student needs. Um, what that looks like by race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, social economic status, cultural background. Um, some of the things even that we heard in um some of the public comment when fall under that cultural background. Maybe a one parent family or a parent that's checked out. But what I heard in the the last um equity meeting with leadership, which I was going to cover in my board report, was a definition of. Of equity that's very much customized our district. And it's not really just focused on race and everything that I heard supported that. Um, and I see our our mission in equity here very, very um aligned with what our district. Needs and the very specific needs that we have. That might be different than a different district, so. Um, I thought the the policy, this policy covered that um quite nicely. So. I don't know if there was a member Perry, though, if there was an area of this policy that that you didn't like, if it was just five, maybe there's a recommendation on how to reword it.
Yes, five is what I have the most problem with.
Did you have a um maybe a way that um you wanted to reword it?
I think there's, I I think there should be a way for. Parents to see what these this material is that has to do with equity.
I would then uh have to say the board will have to address this in the six thousands, because if. Uh, you have in the six thousands, the process by which supplemental materials are adopted and. The board has given authority to staff. Um, and teachers to make that decision uh that is based in, you know, the standards as well as age appropriate materials, so. Um, I I believe you'd have to make a change there um in order to reflect it in what's being proposed.
So could we take it out of this one?
This just says adopt curriculum and instructional materials that accurately reflect the diversity among student groups.
So to me.
Uh, in their classroom.
Adopted curriculum is curriculum, you know, like a textbook adoption that we put out in the district office and parents and community can come and look at.
That is.
So if we, if we do that with this.
Well, we don't do that with curriculum. We do that not with, like we do with textbooks.
I think it's challenging here, member Perry, too, because I think we do want curriculum and instructions to reflect diversity. We do want that. We want.
Yes.
Students of uh different socioeconomic, you know, backgrounds to see themselves in the curriculum, you know, students of different gender identities or so much, you know. Great new material, like you might want that to be out there and be reflected somewhere. Um. So I think it would be hard to just take out that whole piece and not say that we want our curriculum to reflect diversity. Um, especially if we did then uh maybe look at it in the six thousands to add more community input. Is that what you're?
Yeah, I I agree. I want our curriculum to represent, you know, diversity and kids to be able to see themselves. I just am not comfortable with some of the things that I see out there.
What is out there? I'm not sure what you mean by out there. Cool sites?
Out there is books that parents have shown me. Out there is books that I have looked up myself online that have been recommended.
Well, wait a minute, no, I'm saying, have you seen these in classroom libraries or have you, I mean, is it, you've already seen this in a school classroom? Not just that you could find in a bookstore.
No, no, these aren't things that are there now. I'm concerned that they might come.
Okay, so so that's. If, yeah, so if we have consensus to move forward on this, we should move forward because, remember Perry, if you want to provide a li- the list you were talking about. Of these books, that's fine to Dr. Valori, and he could share them appropriately. Remember Kelly, you have a question?
Here's my issue with that.
Jim's on mute, though.
Thank you. Um, this is the first reading. And I think I remember Perry can get us the list for the second reading. And we can have a better idea of what she's talking about as far as what these books are. That possibly could in some way not be relevant to the children who go to beach.
Right, this is the Dr. Mayberry. Our office um is part of the instructional services and we we review these but curriculum materials. Can I ask a quick question just to make sure I understand the question?
Sure. Sure.
Um, so we we have, we have processes to review when we adopt instructional materials that does, we follow the state's process. Which includes a community and and a parent opportunity to review those instructional materials that align to state standards, including supplemental materials. Online curriculum, um, we do, we have processes to review those, so uh. It's the question that, and and it sounds like we're talking about books that um we don't have right now. So it's a concern that teachers are going to. Make decisions to utilize books that are not approved, that are bad for kids. Is there, is it, is it the? Because all books we use now are all approved and reviewed, so I'm, I'll make sure I'm understanding. What I can help address, maybe.
I'm I'm not speaking about books that are used and approved now. I'm speaking more about a an elementary classroom and a read aloud book. Or a a book in the elementary library. And I, and I know we don't. And I also have have a little bit of an issue with giving you a list because. I I don't feel like things happen, like when I gave you a list of the board policies we weren't following and was told we would talk about them. That didn't happen. I, you know.
But we've had the board policy meetings, which two of you, two of them you did not come to. So, but we've had.
They weren't for me to bring up what what policies we didn't follow.
Well, we have had some of those in other policy workshops, D, and they were on a docket and you did not bring up your questions at those times.
They're having. We didn't bring up this one in the workshop while we had attorney present to talk about first amendment rights and other rights. So I was, I I.
That's really off this one series.
Yeah, we're so off topic. This has nothing to do with this policy.
Okay, I I I do not agree with this policy.
Then you can vote against it. You can pull it out.
Yeah.
Against it.
Okay, can we pull it out and redo it?
It's a first read.
This is just first read. We're gonna vote, you could just vote no on the first read. That's fine.
Can I also ask to have it pulled and redone?
Hi.
See, but we, that would be the discussion now. We already asked you what you would want to change, like you could add. Supplemental reading or something, but that's. That's, Dr. Gloria suggested that when we get to the six thousands that you can make suggestions there.
I move the question.
Thank you. Okay, Victoria, do we have to have a? Hang on, I can't remember if this question has.
Second, if you have a second.
Second.
I second it. And do we have to have a vote on it, Jim?
Yeah.
Let me read my thing. Okay. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote on Jim's motion to move the question?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman.
Yes. Okay, so let Ms. Victoria can please conduct a board member roll call vote on the approval of. Board policies in the zero series forwarded for second reading and approval.
Uh, Carol, one clarifying comment?
Yes.
Carrie was in attendance at the July nineteenth meeting at when we did the this series.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so this was by motion by member Vickers and second by President Normandin. Uh member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes, so motion carries four, one, zero, zero. As this takes us to eleven C, is Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the first read and board policies in a thousand series?
There are no attendees hands up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. With that, Dr. Lori, you have the floor.
Thank you. My mouse just died, so trying to work off my other mouse.
Bummer.
A second. Um, all right. Typical, right? Uh, you know, it's a long day when the mouse dies. Um, this is again a proposal for first read. These will come back for a second read. As you can see in the notes and recommendations. Um, we covered quite a few uh of the one thousands and you can see our recommendation as well as the corresponding. Um if there was a deletion where that language would be now uh covered, if not already, so. Uh we are bringing them forward for your consideration. Move to a second read. Help me answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. I'll hold my comment till I make sure if there are any questions. Remember Perry, do you have a question or is your hand up from last time?
Sorry.
Are there any questions? Okay, oh, go ahead, member Kelly.
I was putting my hand down, sorry.
Oh, okay. That's an easy question.
Don't raise that, by the item.
Okay, then uh fellow board members, can I have a motion to move board policies in a thousand series forward? Now a second. Yeah, I'll second them. Okay, is there a discussion or comments? I I do have a quick comment. I just want to say that we did bring all of the policies forward in all of these series and um. The ones that. Uh were current and there were no desires to change anything, those we didn't move forward, even though we brought everything forward, we read through all of them. So we really understood our series, but the ones we brought forward are the ones that are either new or being deleted or have updates. So I just wonder. I forgot to say that before. Okay, any other comment or discussion for the thousand series? I don't see any hands up. Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin.
So motion carries five, zero, and this takes us to eleven D on the agenda, which is the first read of board policies in the two thousand series. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone who would wish to speak um? To the board policies in the two thousand series?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. With that, um Dr. Lori, you have the floor.
Again, uh we're have brought these forward at the boards uh after the review for a first read and recommend uh you move them forward for a second read and approval.
Thank you, Dr. Or- are there any questions or comments on the two thousand series? Okay, I don't see any. Okay, may I have a motion then? One second.
I'm moved.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion or comments? No, I don't see. Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct the board member roll call vote for the two thousand series?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes, so motion carries five, zero. This brings us to eleven E on the agenda. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the first read and board policies in the three thousand series?
There is no one at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. With that, uh Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, these are the three thousand series policies uh being brought forward to the board. Uh, the bulk of them are new policies that were reviewed. As well as some existing policies that were updated at our August third uh study session or workshop. Um and these are being brought forward for the boys' consideration at this first read. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. You guys each had a lot of policies to go through. Very appreciative. I don't see any questions. With that, could I get a motion and a second for to move board policies of the three thousand series forward for a second reading?
I moved.
Carol? Carol?
Yeah, go ahead, Clerk Osborne.
I had a suggestion on on thirty-five, ten. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not fast enough because I was looking for my notes. Um, so thirty-five, ten is the green schools um operations policy, the new one, thirty-five, ten.
Yeah, Victoria, can you pull it up, please?
Yeah.
We're all looking the same thing.
Okay, we and we had some discussion that I saw incorporated from the first, from the policy workshop. Um, hold on, let me get out of Victoria's screen sharing so I can get back to my notes. Um. I think we incorporated under the pesticide use, organic um. Organic pesticides where possible. I think that's at the bottom of the policy, Victoria. Um, which was fine. That was a change that we had talked about, and I think up up a little bit. Under number seven, using effective least toxic, and we added organic where possible pest management practices. Um, that was fine. I just wanted to clarify, we should be using organic. Um, all the time unless there's a health, a risk to health or property for the district, which I think is the intent there. I just wanted to clarify that. Um. And I guess, um Jeff, is that the case on seven? Is that your understanding as well?
So, yes, I did go back and confirm, and we have used the organic and non-toxic in the past. Um, and I also did confirm the amount of the the pest traps that we use are very, very minimal every year. So we don't do a lot of it. Um, so it, we're talking hundreds of dollars in our uh in our budget, so. Um, yes, where possible, we will absolutely use to match what we're doing everywhere else. Um, and I did confirm it's just, it won't be a significant impact because of the the small amount of uh pesticides that we deal or uh the pest management that we have to deal with.
Great, okay, thanks. And then on um down on eleven, where we talk about um. Let me just scroll down so everybody's kind of following along. I think that's the most efficient. If I just suggest my change and other board members can. Um chime in where it says integrating green school practices and activities into the educational program. I thought perhaps we could strengthen that language by um saying. Integrating environmental literacy into the educational program. Um, that's a. Just a broader encompassing um area of education. Does anybody have a an issue with that?
It's into a curricular issue.
As we kind of.
As opposed to this series that it would be when we get to the curriculum and instruction policies.
I know you mentioned that last, it says that when, if you read through eleven, it says. We integrate green school practices into the education by providing instruction to students on the importance of the environment, so. We kind of go into that area in eleven anyways. It's just a little bit. Um finer word choice.
And I know Jeff did so much wo- work on our um on the ward for the schools on around all of us and everything else. Um, but I think this little more, and this is Jeff's area, and it's kind of more of a Mayberry question, I guess. But so whenever I feel like we're switching the person, maybe we're switching it, but I don't know um if they see a difference. Chad sees a difference or Jeff sees a difference in integrating. Environmental, what did you say, environmental practices? Well, what were the words?
Environmental literacy.
Environmental literacy. And activities, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if Victoria, if you can just highlight where it says integrating and then green school practices and activities. I just think that the environmental literacy into the education.
This paragraph, I see that these could be incorporated in a number of ways and any number of academic or, you know, non-academic subjects. But when I hear environmental literacy, I think of a whole component program that we would then have some way to. Uh gather data to make sure that our students were getting, becoming environmentally literate.
Well, and that's why I want to, I want to ask, that's why I want to ask Chad and and Jeff, sorry, Dr. Mayberry, so we're not in the workshop, Dr. Mayberry. Mr. Dixon, I want to, if they hear that in that same way, John, because I kind of hear it that way, but I just want to make, if they don't. If they don't hear it that way, I I like it.
I'll respond because I think I responded in the workshop, and so what?
Okay.
What I mentioned in the workshop was sixty-one, forty-two dot five is environmental education. It specifically calls out environmental literacy. So my recommendation at that time was not to include language around uh instruction in the three thousands. Um but to keep them separate and to leave uh in the wait until we get to sixty-one, forty-two dot five to discuss uh anything related to instruction. Because um people, you're not going to go looking in the three thousands for instruction. Let's leave instruction where it's at, which is the six thousands. That's my recommendation to the board, but obviously we'll do what the board majority request.
I think this is a unique area where a lot of facilities. Activities or operations of the school start to cross into being environmentally literate, like what I do with my. Trash at school after lunch is an act of environmental literacy, so I see the rub between them. I was just trying to clean it up and make that. Um, policy sound better, but if nobody.
Well, I just read it more as.
Want to move on.
Kelly, I'm sorry, I just read it more as like this is Jeff's area, and so it's talking about the facilities and spaces, and so kind of the green school practices and activities. Made more sense to me, right? And that in the the one that has to do with Dr. Mary Berry makes more sense that we're talking about it there. Um. But are you okay with moving on, just leaving it that way and moving on? Clerk Osborne?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, I thought that was a question for for Jeff.
Nor are you okay with it just the way it is?
Yeah, I guess. I had another um suggestion as well, if you guys want to leave. I think to to uh the uh Dr. Reloya's point, though, if we're not going to talk about instruction here. Then we should remove all of eleven. If we really don't want to talk about environmental literacy, even as it integrates into some of our. Um activities that take place at school, whether that's an instructional activity or just how you deal with your trash or how you use water. Then maybe we should just strike eleven um altogether, so.
And we took it up, but it, what I was thinking about on that one, and I didn't, maybe not finding the words for it, but the integrating the facility with. With instruction or with educational programs. Like, I guess I would like that worded clear. I just couldn't think of a way to word it clear. Right? So that, because that's where I really see this. This is Jeff's arena. This is the facilities, and how do those facilities then integrate within? It does say the word instruction, so I don't know if there's another word to put there besides instruction. But I agree with you.
I think maybe just take it out to Dr. Reloya's point. He's had his, he had that that suggestion in the policy workshop. Jan thinks it belongs in the six thousands unless anybody else has a, won't have any problem with that.
And remember Perry, hold on a second, because Jeff's jumping in on this question, so Mr. Dixon, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, President Norman. I will just jump in and say that the language, the way that I'm reading the policy is it's it's generic enough that we know there's a lot of great, great opportunities presented when you have a green school and. The operations to make it sustainable and a lot of it relates to the steam and STEM learning that you see. Um, that language uh I think just recognizes that and is generic enough that it doesn't impede or or prevent us from accomplishing anything else that in our green school operations in the policy. But I do think it is specific to the operations um in the three thousands, and it is helpful to have. That specificity listed above, but whatever you do with eleven, it wouldn't um make a difference with the implementation of that policy.
Okay, okay. And Clerk Osborne, if we could put that on pause and let me have a moment to reflect it, I'm gonna get a number Perry and we'll come back to that. To that question, so, okay. Remember Perry, what was your question? Oh, Clerk Osborne, you're.
I just wasn't, I was having a really hard time hearing Jeff. I don't know if anybody else was, maybe it was on my side. Okay, I'm gonna turn my video off because maybe I'm having a poor connection.
Okay. Remember Perry, do you have your question? Then we'll go back to Clerk Osborne.
Um, since this is in the facilities area, could we put something in here um emphasizing our outdoor classrooms? Doctor.
Mr. Dixon?
I think this is more specific to green school operations.
Right.
In uh outdoor classrooms are more just about flexible classroom space, so it's not necessarily tied or related to this policy.
Well, I I guess I'm thinking of outdoor classrooms, including the gardens. Which do have to do with a green school, and I I watched the video from your meeting. And I know you also discussed the award and how much work went into getting the green award for top of the world. Um, and that you didn't want to put something in there about trying for an award, but it really develops student interest. And when you, when you talk to young people, um the environment is really their number one interest. And they feel, I met with a group of students this summer, they feel like um. So many of the the people in Congress making decisions, environmental decisions are not going to be around. To see what happens if nothing is done, and they're very frustrated, and it seems like as a school district, we we could really emphasize this. Kind of.
Well, I I thought bringing the policy forward is emphasizing, and Dr. Lori has a comment.
I don't think we usually put that kind of specificity into policies as far as the itemized things. That's, I think that was where we det- detoured off of putting like seeking the awards. Because that's making something more specific.
Well, that was.
So if I if I can just speak, I, um, so to Clerk Osborne's point around number eleven. Number eleven, I think it it belongs in the facilities component because it's talking about a blend between. How the facilities work and or, you know, any kind of um work that are, that's happening, whether it's recycling. That's often in conjunction with, right, the facilities work. So you have, uh, you may have a recycling program like we currently do. That one really blends well because you have a crossover really of of kind of two different branches within the business department and. And uh, so its department as well as the the teaching and and learning side of things. It, I think if you look at the environmental education policy, that's uh currently, um, you know, at most. Recent revision, I think was back in six uh six, one, twenty-one. It's quite up to date. And it talks about both of the items that that just came up, one about kind of the outdoor learning spaces, not specifically calling out the gardens necessarily, but it does talk about the uh outdoor learning spaces. And it uh it does talk about the importance of environmental literacy and preparing students to be stewards of the natural resources. And to live an environmentally sustainable lifestyle. I think there's some nice components there around kind of the learning experiences that are more specific to. Um, as we were talking about earlier about curriculum, um that, you know, obviously is is specific to California, so you would identify curriculum. Um, that is in fire about bar mile stewardship, um kind of about the work that we're doing at at the high school as well. Um, that uh Mr. Robek has has been spearheading, um has been fantastic, and the students are really um enjoying that work, and I think that. That's what belongs in the sixty-one, forty-two side because it's specific to instruction. Um, and and solely really instruction, whereas uh this policy is is more. Uh focused on what are we doing in the, as a facilities component, while I also, but I do agree with eleven. That is a great opportunity for us to talk about how the facilities component could work with student clubs or whatever it might be to offer a recycling program. Right? So um I just, I'm making those recommendations simply because it does help kind of create some clarity. Um, around where to go find uh different focus areas of focus and um. But again, you know, we haven't had a chance to talk about sixty-one, forty-two because it's it's in the six thousands and we haven't gotten there yet, so. Um, I recognize that you might not have seen or have seen uh this policy yet, um so it uh. It, I think it gives us exactly what we're looking for as what I remember Perry just mentioned. Um, as well as kind of areas of focus around literacy, in particular environmental literacy that calls it out. Um, and that uh it could be something that we continue to move forward with in our L cap event, for example.
Okay, so so are we saying though that the gardens are not part of the facilities?
What I'm saying is that what you were referencing regarding um the focus on having our students. Go out into and learning in the gardens, that's curriculum instruction.
Right.
Maintaining gardens, um if the board desires to have a. Maintaining gardens, if the board desires to have a specific line item that says that we will maintain gardens at all of our sites or something to that effect, that obviously we'd go into the facility side.
Okay, and, and with the, with like the water coming up, we would address that more on the curriculum side, like saving water than on the facility side?
Well, if you're talking about what actions we're taking as a school district, that's a facilities. If you're talking about doing something in a curricular fashion about being water wise, and that's happening in a classroom, that's gonna happen in instruction.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What we're, what we're seeing is the nuance of green school operations and environmental literacy are really interwoven, and having had some experience in this, the, the two aren't as easily separated from one another. So I think that was a good discussion, and I, I look forward to, to, I call it its partner policy. But I do still agree with member Perry on adding something to the effect of, I can show you or read to you guys what I thought perhaps we could discuss, which would be either a twelve or thirteen, if we're gonna keep eleven, specifically related to the facilities aspect, which would be to utilize, maintain and develop, or you could put and/or develop, outdoor classrooms and outdoor learning spaces to foster environmental literacy in our students and provide health and wellness benefits to the staff. So we're utilizing, maintaining, developing outdoor classrooms. I think that should be somewhere in this policy, because that is a, a goal within our district that I've seen and observed and see as pursuing it, and I think it belongs in this section based on what we've talked about so far.
I love that, Clerk Osborne. I think that was very well put.
Just my two cents is I would be much more comfortable with using environmental awareness as opposed to environmental literacy.
Because of the facility side, member Bickers.
Environmental awareness, okay.
Just based on what she just read.
Yeah, so maybe utilize, maintain and develop outdoor classrooms and outdoor learning spaces to foster environmental awareness. Does anybody?
Dr. Bellora, go ahead. Your hands up and, Mr. Dixon, your hands up before I make my comment.
I'll let Jeff respond.
Okay, could I just get a clear clarification of what you're meaning by outdoor classroom? What is the intent or what is the definition for that space?
I think outdoor classrooms and outdoor learning spaces can be defined by what are, you know, what teachers, what staff, what, what our current facility supports. I think there, there can be a really broad definition. An outdoor learning space could be a shaded piece of turf that kids go to learn on to do an experiment. An outdoor classroom might be more permanent where it has tables that are outdoors and shade. Maybe tables that are appropriate for the types of outdoor learning that you might be doing or aren't used by other groups, you know, at the same time. But I, I see that as a direction on the district that we're going to have these spaces, not just have them, but also maintain them. And I think that that's important. If we're gonna have a new green schools operations policy that we, we talk about, I think as a board, what, what do we see in those? So yes, it could be a garden, a small garden, it could be a pocket garden, it could be a large garden. An outdoor classroom could even be a composting area. I don't think they all look the same.
I think that, that makes it a little difficult, just because the parameters for what defines this, this outdoor area are finite. It's not exact. It could be an actual space that we built with a shade structure and supporting furniture, or it could just be a tree. So it'd be hard.
Mr. Dixon, can I just interrupt? Can you get it either now or before we bring this back for the second reading? Could you give us verbiage that isn't in the weeds? Right? But gives us the fact that this is something we do wanna promote and we are all interested in. Right? Having spent ten years in the garden at TOW, and I know, I know we're intimately, especially three of us intimately aware of that, that garden system. Something that is about utilizing, maintaining, developing that space that isn't in the weeds, so we're not getting in there, but is using that green space, right? If you could come up with some language around that and make a suggestion, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
And Clerk Osborne, and that would be like number twelve, and Clerk Osborne, you good with that? And it can come maybe through an update, so we can all see it ahead of time, or I don't know if that's allowed or not, wherever the law allows us to, or in the next meeting. Because I, I'd like to see it as well. I, I think that it's a piece that's it's missing. I just don't wanna, I wanna leave it general enough so that it can be what it needs to be based on our educators in our community. Right? But I don't wanna make it so narrow that it doesn't mean anything at all.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
Thank you for all those great suggestions. And member Kelly, your hands up.
I'm wondering if we can pass this as a first reading, and at the second reading, if we could come back with the language that you're talking about from Jeff and others, so that we will insert it at that time and then pass it as policy.
Are you saying pull it for the next meeting? So it's a first reading again with a changed language?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying pass it as the first reading now. And when, when, when it comes back, because the second reading, bring it in as an amendment to, to this policy at that point in time. As far as the second.
Yes.
That is what I meant. So thank you, member Kelly, for clarifying that. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, do you still have a question? Your hands still up, or just to make sure I'm not comment, okay. Okay. Are there all questions and comments? If not, put up your zoom hand, so you pop forward. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, again, for the comments and questions, and look forward to seeing the language, Mr. Dixon. Victoria, can you conduct a board member call vote?
Yes, member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, so the motion carries five zero, which takes us to eleven E on agenda. Mr. Cohen, is there anyone wishing to speak to the first read in board policies in the four thousand series?
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Well, that makes the floor yours.
Thank you, President Norman, board members. Yes, so as you see, this is a, the first section of board policies in the four thousand series. Again, we did bring these back and reviewed them. So at this time, we were bringing them back for the, for the first read, and I, I welcome any, any questions that you might have.
Member Perry.
I, I just wondered, I, I know the one about employment references. We said that we are going to put it in an AR policy. What is the AR policy going to say?
Yes, the, it is going to be, we, there's a sample CSBA policy that we're going to, to review. It's, so we're gonna follow that model and maybe make some minor tweaks just to match our practices, but it's going to follow the, the, the CSBA.
But I meant, what, what is that?
Well, it has not been.
How is it, how is it different from this?
It has not been created yet. But again, there's just, this is not, the, the CSBA does not have this, this, this policy. So our recommendation was to, and they, and they only have the AR, so our recommendation was to omit this policy and just go follow their, their process and have an AR.
Is, is there AR similar to this policy? What, what I'm looking at, at is
Say the number again, please.
The number is four-one-one-two-point-six-one, four-two-one-two-point-six-one, four-three-one-two-point-six-one.
So, remember Perry, the, when we went through all the policies, and we did, we did look at the ARs at the time in the meeting to prepare for the policy meeting. But, and if you, if you Googled it, it also does give you like the templates. All CSBA's templates are out there.
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking at, Board Norman, is there have been some issues with this? With saying that all references need to go through the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. So for instance, if a, a teacher is moving to the state of Washington and asking for a reference, and her co-teacher writes her a reference, she can't, she can't use it. It has to go through the superintendent. I, I don't know how that, how that goes as far as student references. I don't know how that goes as far as like board references. I mean, I, I've written quite a few references for students, teachers, even administrators. I mean, it's so, and in many cases, the, the superintendent may not, may not, you know, may have seen the person once or twice, but doesn't really know their teaching style.
Well, one, we're, we're only talking about employees here, the sections. It's only employment. And then.
Done this as a board member, member Perry?
Am I a board member?
No, you've done this as a board member. These recommendations.
I have.
For teachers and for, yes, I have.
Okay, so Dr. Gloria has this hand up.
So this doesn't preclude a person from writing a letter of recommendation. And it simply clarifies that the letter of recommendation cannot be on behalf of the school district. So, and, and there are reasons for this, just so you're aware. The, the reasons are that stem back to cases where people have signed and provided letters of recommendation on behalf of employees simply to get rid of them. And the receiving agency receives a, a letter of recommendation that is not an accurate representation. So that is why this policy actually exists, and our, you know, our current active policy specifically calls out that this is the process that we, is utilized. So if you write a letter of recommendation on behalf of an employee, on behalf of the school district, it's a, it's a violation of the policy. And there, and it is simply because they, it is a best practice to have specific references regarding an employee on behalf of the school district coming from either myself or a designee, which could be a, a principal, could be Mike Conlon as a human resources. But it's, that way, if it's on behalf of the school district, the liability lies with myself and or the designee that I choose to write that letter.
So as long as a teacher just puts her name and teacher, then it's not on behalf of the district. So that's right. As long as, you know, I'm writing one for a student, but I don't say on behalf of Laguna Beach School District.
Well, this is, this is reference, this is employment references. That's a different, that's.
Oh, yeah, different.
This is, we're only talking about employment references.
But students have also asked me for employment references.
Now, this is not, this is about employees who are leaving our district to go work somewhere else. So that doesn't have to do with the student applying for a job. This would be specific to another teacher that's currently employed. As you, as your example, hypothetical, a teacher is employed, moving to the state of Washington requesting a letter of recommendation. Now, remind, we, we've had some clarity issues with this that we've had to share with staff that they've said, and Mike has sent out reminders that, no, in fact, you can write a, a letter of recommendation. You simply, excuse me, you cannot do it on behalf of the school district, right? That needs to go through Mike or somebody else. And again, it's simply a liability issue. Because there have been many situations, unfortunately, where things have been misrepresented. And that's why this, this is in place. But again, it doesn't preclude somebody from doing, from writing a letter of recommendation.
Okay, I, I think there maybe needs to be a little more clarification about that, because I just recently heard from two teachers about this, and, and they're thinking that they can't write a letter of recommendation for someone.
Member Perry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause you and just ask for a motion in a second, so that we can then have a discussion, because it sounds more like discussion than questions. Right? And so I just don't wanna violate law. So could I get a, a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. I'll second that. Okay, now go ahead and keep going.
So, teachers can write a recommendation. Some teachers feel they have been told they could not, and so are.
Yes, we, I like, as Dr. Gloria stated, I have, as recently as this spring, I have clarified that piece with principals. And, and when staff have, have asked, so it, it has been, and it's been a point that I've shared at, at a leadership meeting with a copy of the board policy saying, as a reminder, this is the board policy, this is the criteria, like not on district letterhead and things like that. So we just, so, and, and yes, it, it is, it was probably, it's one of the one kind of most common misconceptions, but we continue to take opportunities to clear it up and clarify and share what the actual board policy stated, what the criteria is. And so, yeah, as, as that comes, as the situations arise, we do our best to clarify and share what the actual practices.
Okay, good. I, I, this summer, two different people came up to me, so pretty recently, thinking they could not.
I would direct them back to their principal, and then we would love to help clarify that.
And Mr. Cohen, I just have a quick question on, on the AR, because, you know, the story takes over our screen. On the AR, it still has, yeah, it has the legal reference. Sorry, I just looked at myself. So the case is still there that talks about the tort. It talks about the, the fact that there's a tort liability. So I just wanna, Victoria, I wasn't saying you had to take it down. I just, I was just looking to the, the liability. And so I just wanna make sure on the AR, it still will have those same legal references.
Yeah, I had the air pulled up right now. I mean, I, I don't have them side by side to see the difference, but there's a number of, of you know, references at the bottom, and it does clearly state the idea of that, and, you know, that any letters of recommendation that are issued on behalf of the district need to be approved by a superintendent or designee. So it calls out, you know, on behalf of the district. But yes, it does not preclude someone from
Yeah, because that's where the, that's where the tort liability comes in. And, Miss Kelly, uh, member Kelly, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Mike, in the faculty staff handbook, is there a, a statement in there summarizing what you just said?
I'll have to check. I'll tap my head. I am not sure.
My suggestion is that you put it in there. That would make it very clear to everyone if it's in, if it's in that handbook.
Well, I think the AR, that, that would be part of their process, you know, kind of more in the weeds of the operations. That would be part of their process through the AR to do that. And that's why it's not a good board policy. It's a better AR, right, than a policy. Really, for this conversation we're having. Of the confusion. And while, remember Kelly, are you looking for, are you waiting for Mr. Cohen to answer? Because I was gonna ask if there are any other questions or comments.
I'm sorry, I.
Are you waiting for Mr. Cohen to answer that, or you were just making the suggestion no matter what the answer was?
No, I, I was just suggesting that we put it in the handbook for all employees, so it's quite clear. And it just, it just needs to be a simple paragraph, anymore.
Well, if I remember right, that might have been covered in the ARs. But, okay, okay, are there any other comments or questions on this policy or any of the other policies within the four thousand? Because we are in discussion now too, so comments are.
So, a quick question. So would this include a student teacher?
Would what include a student teacher?
This AR policy, like the master teacher could write a letter, but it couldn't be for the district, correct?
They would just write it on, on behalf of themselves.
Okay, okay.
And you can, remember Perry, you can read the Randall W. Which is more joint unified or whatever it was, that whatever the, the reason why, the tort law of why you can't speak on behalf of the district.
I, I think I, I think I understand that, but I can.
Okay, yeah, because I could speak upon themselves, for themselves.
But I mean, it isn't, it isn't my problem. It's people asking me.
Well, and as, and as Mr. Cohen said, he sent it back to the principal, then he definitely can jump in if there's anything. And number Kelly said that maybe it's something in the handbook as well, that they can point to.
Well, in one case, the principal said they couldn't, so.
And we've continued to clarify that. And we've continued to clarify that.
Okay.
So, and that's why it'll be better as an AR instead of a policy. Are there any other comments on any of the other 4,000s? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll, uh, call vote to approve, to bring forward the second reading for approval?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. And this brings us to 12 on the agenda, which is reports for governance. And thank you for everyone for all of the work on all of those policies. And I know we have more we have to review. See, sorry. So we're gonna start with board reports on 12A. And for any new listeners, this section is for just board members to give brief report to their fellow members. The falls within scope of their role as a board member, or else they'll be a C. And Jan will start with you, Member Vickers.
Okay, well, I look forward to things starting up again, and then there will be some things to attend, whether it's virtually and can report back. Of course, we had our policy workshops. I just would. Compliment everyone that does all the work to bring the policies to us, to update those, and to bring the new policies. It's a lot of work. And as you know from attending the workshops, as my fellow board members, it is a lot to prepare for. And it's one of the most important aspects of our role as a board member, is doing the policy work for the district. So, you know, attending those meetings, we've, you know, it's hard work. As far as staying on top of it, and we have Mark come so that we can address the legal issues and bring those forward. Try to be efficient. But I would say witnessing, not in person, but just by hearing all the reports, tremendous amount of work has been done. Through the summer, Margaret referenced that. This was a very, very busy summer. Trying to make up some for students that didn't have the on-campus experience during the, the year. And, uh, then going into this new year, so much work has been done to repair all the things we have to do. What I am really hoping, since we did not have a parent or community coming to this meeting as they had in. Huntington Beach City and Newport Mesa, I believe it was just the, the last night. Just not, being very, very divisive about particularly students coming to school needing to wear masks. And I'm just really hoping that that reflects that this community is going to know that. There are things that we need to do to keep students and staff and what they take home, their families beyond themselves. Healthy, safe, and able to stay coming to school in person. That it's an, it's an inconvenience. I mean, none of us like it, but we know the things that we have to dig in and do. Because having in-person instruction is so important. And we're there, and we're, and I'm just really hopeful that, that. Not having that at our meeting tonight means that we have the vast majority of our parents and community on the same page. And that will be great, because the, the people that will benefit are students. So that's, that's what I have to say to you. Thank you. Thanks for all the professional development, and thanks you for the, the work.
Thank you, Member Vickers. Member Perry, the floor is yours.
Um, I want to thank Dr. Gloria for changing the breakfast location down to the quad. I thought that worked out really well. And we could spread out, um, everybody, there, there was a really good atmosphere there. Everybody seemed pretty happy, and everybody's eager to see the students again. I spent quite a bit of time lately with parents that were complaining about homework. Especially the high school and some mask discussions. Um, so that's it.
Thank you, Member Perry. Uh, Member Kelly?
I want to thank the gods for not raining on us on our Welcome Back Breakfast and holding off. I was down in Dana Point and got really, really wet. But I thought that Welcome Back Breakfast was spectacular. I want to thank everyone who put it together. It was so nice after 18 months to, to see the teachers, the staff, and what an excellent presentation. And, uh, everything that our, our staff does from keeping, putting the schools together, keeping them clean. And preparing for this next year. It's, it's just very, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kelly. Clerk Osborne, the floor is yours.
Well, thanks, President Norman. And, um, I also attended the Welcome Back Breakfast. And found that to be really nice to see everybody. And, um, I really enjoyed getting to see all the recognitions and feel all the, um, community and the staff spirit that was there. Really appreciated that. Um, some of the other things that I was busy doing since our last board meeting. I also attended the Community Coalition Meeting on August 4th. Uh, we worked on a 2021, 22 plan for raising healthy teens. Um, that was at the New Port Center, uh, the Boys and Girls Club Port, uh, which is focused on the teenage group. So it was neat to also get to see that facility. I attended the equity session with district, district leadership as a guest on August 12th. And really was encouraged by this broad definition of diversity that is really custom and relevant to our district. And I know I brought that up before, but, um, in no way is our definition solely focused on, on race. And I was really impressed by the work that was done and was, um, just, you know, really. Thankful for taking a deeper dive on the, on the topic of equity and not trying to have it be at the superficial level. And I think that's, that's it. I'm really thankful for, for Mr. Conlin and for the whole district working really quickly on the stat vaccine mandate. And I know that that's gonna help us have a really safe back-to-school environment for the whole school community. And I know that that was a lot of work. We moved really quickly on that as a board and with the unions and with district leadership. And I just am so thankful that everybody's pulling together on that. That says a lot about our community. And how much we care for everybody that comes on for our campus, and especially our youngest students that remain fully unvaccinated. Over half of our student population is not eligible. So really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. I'd like to get at what you said on that. Um, and I do, I've, I've. Before we had a positive COVID case in our house. Um, I had been traveling and traveled 10,000 miles in two months, moving college kids and 8,000 by driving. So, um, I responded to everyone's emails and everything else, but, um, and unfortunately missed equity. I think that you're, you're speaking of the meeting Clerk Osborne, I so wanted to attend. And I'm so glad you got to go. But I, I'm filled with such gratitude, excitement. I don't know how not having excitement after listening to Margaret talk, but for school to start. I just ask everyone to be diligent, I can't say that word well, but diligent in applying the Swiss cheese model. For viruses, for respiratory viruses. And so I'm just gonna quickly go over the cute little model, but it's physical distancing, stay home if you're sick. Wash your hands, cough etiquette, masks, limit your time in crowds if you can, avoid touching your face, which we all do. The fast and sensitive testing and tracing, which I applaud our school district for being on top of. And, uh, there was so much work to put in place and so much work to do. The ventilation, outdoor air filtration, which, you know, Jeff has been on top of with his whole group. The quarantining and isolation, which, you know, the families, you know, it's a shared responsibility. And then, uh, you know, financial support and vaccines. And so as we apply the personal side of the things we can do. And then the district is applying all the things, there's shared responsibility, but we still have a part in that, like, cause I, you know, fingers crossed that. Everyone will stay healthy and, and well through, especially the little young ones that can't have the vaccines, um, yet. So, and, um, we did have the board policy workshops, and I really do want to applaud everyone behind the scenes. There's so much you guys have to read through and look and to see if it's connected and if it's our practice and, and how does it tie in with our ARs and other things? And I am so appreciative of all the work you have to do. I don't, I know Janet has always understood that, but I don't think I quite understood the depth of, uh. What you guys do behind the scenes for those workshops. And I'm, I'm just appreciative, because going over all of them also allows all of you. I, I know Jason is aware of all of them. He has it on the top of his head, but allows everybody to know what the legal changes are and everything else that's happening. Cause there's so much that changes, but just having the review helps us stand top of it. So I appreciate it. I know it was more work. While preparing for everything else you were doing. And I so appreciate it. And I appreciate all my fellow board members for all of your graded comments into them. And insights in bringing whatever we can change to reflect our community that we are really noting in there. So thank you, everyone. Want to remind everyone though, under our bylaw 9322 and ED code 35145.5. You guys can ask the superintendent any questions you want. That's really encouraged before meetings. So that, you know, we all have all that transparency and equity for all of our stakeholders when we're in these meetings. And I appreciate every time you guys ask questions. We all learn from them. Um, but he is there. He's always answering his questions. Don't, don't hesitate to ask him. That's all I have. And that moves us to 12B. And Superintendent Report closes out. Oh, I'm untrue. Senator Min, I am gonna talk to Senator Min, because I wasn't able to go because of the day after the COVID positive test. And so I will talk to Senator Min on the phone, I think this weekend. Go ahead, Dr. Ward.
All right, I'll be, I'll be brief. Uh, yes, we did have a, a visit from Senator Min and his, his staff. Mike Collin and I had a chance to talk with him and walk him over to the high school a little bit, just to talk about the mitigation measures we have in place. And some of the challenges that we see on the forefront, uh, hiring in particular. We, we are lucky in that we typically have a fairly strong subpool, but we recognize that the substitute pool is dwindling. And that's something that we are concerned about, as well as just some of the other things that are out there, including, you know, the universal TK. And ensuring that community-funded districts are also funded. Um, if they do put it into the LCFF formula, that would. Preclude us from being a part of it. I would point out that, um, Dr. Spessert and the team and my, Dr. Keller. Pam Madge, Kelly, that is just an amazing team of folks, putting together a lot of information on our website. We have updated our COVID-19 reporting. Uh, we have the most up-to-date decision tree information. That continues to, to be, uh, ever evolving. A lot of information just regarding, um, the 2122 school year. And things that we've put into place. COVID-19 resources and information on independent studies. So I really highly encourage anybody who has questions. Uh, obviously, you could go and look at the website, reach out directly to, uh, your site administrator, uh, asking questions. And I know, uh, Dr. Keller, Pam Madge, and Kelly Schultz. They're always trying to make sure that people find a way to communicate with them, especially if they have questions regarding COVID-19 positive cases, et cetera. So, um, I really do highly encourage, uh, everybody to become familiar with the website. And if there's something on there that you're not seeing, just to let us know, make sure we try to get it updated. We do plan on sending out additional information tomorrow regarding test kits. We do have a significant supply of test kits from Ambry Genetics that, uh, we have available on our school sites, as well as district office. That folks can pick up, and we'll remind people of that going into this next week. And, uh, you know, we appreciate all the support the board has provided us over the last 18 months especially. This, we could not have done it without, uh, your leadership. And, uh, I think come Monday, we're very proud to be back in session. And I look forward to seeing all the smiling faces of our students as, uh, as they get onto our campuses and, and get back to learning. So, or as Margaret Water pointed out, not a lot of them left in some cases. We had a lot on, on our campus summer, uh, doing enrichment, et cetera. But, um, I'm, I am looking forward to it, and I have two students in my household who are looking forward to as well, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gloria. With that, we're moving to 13A. The next regular scheduled business meeting is September 9th, 2021. I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Moved.
Clerk Osborne and Member Vickers? As a reminder, BB 9200, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual authority until we're seated again. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call vote?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.